Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. This is our third town hall in the last couple of weeks, and this one is focusing on athletics and fine arts, and really athletics and fine arts in the context of this pandemic that we are in this year that's been like no other. We do have one more town hall coming up. It's just newly added to the schedule. We're going to be focusing on special education issues in a town hall on Monday, February 1st. So, parents, you'll be receiving an email probably this evening about that, and it'll be posted on our website as well with information of how you can join if you are interested in that topic. So again, thanks for joining us. And just want to tell you a little bit about some of our panelists. We have panelists from our athletics department and our fine arts department. Dr. Daniel Presley, of course, is joining us, our acting superintendent. Dwayne Wirick, our athletics director. Lisa Robuck, our director of fine arts. We're also joined by our chief equity officer, Mr. Dwayne Street. He's still, he's our very first inaugural chief equity officer. He joined in November. I'm really excited to have him. And again, as I said, there's some other staff members who can really help provide answers to questions for you. And then we're also joined by our Board of Trustees Vice President, trustee Corey Vessa. So we're so happy to have her with us as well. And then you also see that we have American Sign Language interpreters. So we'll be pinning their videos during the presentation so that they'll be visible. They'll be switching back and forth. We're going to have a short presentation just to kind of go over some key points, highlights in both of those areas of athletics and fine arts. And then we're going to open it up to questions. So what we'd like you to do, if you see at the bottom of your screen, there's a little Q and A icon. If you'll click there and you can just put your questions there, and we'll be answering them live. A recording of this, if you have friends who are interested or maybe you want to go back and watch it, it's going to be available on our website. It should be there tomorrow. And then we'll be adding closed captioning in both English and Spanish. And we'll also be adding transcriptions of this video in English and Spanish. So multiple ways to get this information. We aren't always able to get to every single question, but we'll do our best. Or there's a possibility that we don't have the question tonight. It hasn't happened yet because we have experts on the panel. But please know that we do capture all of these questions, and they really inform our communication. We understand where we need to shore up communication or outreach. It helps us know what we need to make sure is available on our website or maybe what campus principals need to be communicating about. So it's all very valuable input, and we appreciate it. And with that, I think we're going, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Dr. Daniel Presley for the welcome. He's having a little bit of technical issues, so his camera might come off and on, just so you know. Dr. Presley?
Thanks, Jenny. I turned my camera off, so maybe the audio is better. So I apologize for that. But I want to thank everybody who's joining us tonight. It looks like we have over 100 participants in the meeting. And I can tell you, we have over 100 years of experience on the call with our staff who are helping navigate this pandemic. So the effort tonight is to try to make everyone aware of the strategies, the things that we're doing in the district to mitigate the pandemic and also to follow the guidance from our UIL, which is our, the University Interscholastic League is our guiding force as far as extracurricular activities as well as the Texas Education Agency. So I appreciate Dwayne Wirick and Lisa Robuck being on the call with us tonight. And they have maybe some other team members that will join as well. I also want to thank trustee Vessa for taking your time to join us tonight. I know you're not only a trustee, but a parent in the district and an invested parent and constituent as well as having students who are involved in extracurricular activities. So we really appreciate you joining us tonight. I'll just make a couple of comments. You know, the ability of kids to participate in extracurriculars, and there's a lot of data that shows this, propagates a higher performance in the classroom. So our students who are participating in fine arts and athletics and UIL academics as well show a much more propensity to be successful. And those are numbers we have from who's passing because a lot of kids participate in these activities, and they know they, in order to participate, they have to continue to pass all their classes per the no pass, no play consideration in Texas. So that's one thing. But I'll also tell you that over 34 years, a lot of kids that I've seen, that I've been honored to be associated with in fine arts and athletics, become amazing citizens. They become incredibly successful in life after high school because of their participation in high school, fine arts and athletics. They learn strategies. They learn discipline. And we can give you the data from Ms. Robuck or Coach Wirick. But the fact that they participate launches them on lifelong things that they do and that they have that enable them to be successful in the corporate world or in whatever world they choose to participate in. So I just want to say those things tonight because this is a, this is a very important meeting that we know. And we know the pandemic has put a new environment on us that we've never had before. So we're trying to navigate this as successfully as possible to continue to let kids participate, but keeping kids and staff as safe as possible. So with that, I'll pivot to Coach Wirick. If you want to start the presentation, and then we'll take questions after that.
Thank you, Dr. Presley. I also want to say from the very beginning that I'm joined tonight by Tara Hollywood, Assistant Athletic Director, and also Matt Owens, an athletic trainer at Cedar Ridge High School. Two people that I'm very, very proud could join us here tonight. So in my presentation, I wanted to share a little bit about the journey that we've gone on in order to get where we are today, some of the things that are still coming up, some of the challenges that we faced and some of the ways that we've attempted to meet, to meet those challenges. I am extremely proud of our coaches, our athletic trainers, and our over 8,000 athletes that participate between the middle school and high schools. It's a breakdown of about 4,500 athletes in high school and about 3,500 right now in our middle school. So again, I'm very proud of how they've handled all the hurdles and the challenges and made the changes that they've had to make this year. It's not, it's not been easy for anyone. It's been about an eight-month journey to this point, starting back in June when the UIL allowed us to start getting together again in our summer strength and conditioning programs, our sports-specific trainings. And we've had to work through some policies or some rules. We've had to work through some recommendations. And then we've had to make just some local decisions on how to operate under those conditions. But again, it's about an eight-month journey to get to this point. It's about another four months to go before we wrap it all up this school year with the end of the state baseball tournament. So again, I'm very, very proud of everyone who's helped work through all those challenges to this point. You see, I put as a kind of a title there, "Monitor and Adjust." I think that's something that we've, we've had to do from day one, maybe from day one back in, in March of last year when, when schools sort of came to a halt. We've kind of had to monitor the information that we're getting. We've had to adjust our practices. And so that's sort of a theme behind what I'm going to share with you. Some of our decisions have been guided, obviously, by the CDC, TEA, of course, the UIL, some of our local health officials from both Williamson and Travis County. And then again, you know, decisions that we've had to make locally within the administration and/or working with our coaches and our athletic trainers. As I said, we've dealt with recommendations. We've dealt with non-negotiables. And then we've dealt with conflicting information to arise some of the things that we do today. So if you want to move to the next slide, I think we can talk a little more specifically. So as I mentioned, all this started back in the summer. And then that's got us to the point where we're now into the spring sports. It may not fight quite feel like spring just yet, but really we consider the sports that are just now beginning to be our spring sports. So we started back in the summer, speed and strength camps. We had to deal with some of the issues of starting, stopping, restarting, some of the issues of how we could practice or I should say, train. You know, how big can our groups be? What drills can we do? How do we get kids into facilities and out? Where do they park? Where do they exit? How do we get them in safely and practice social distancing? How do we group student athletes? Do we, in the past, you know, we could get out there with a group of 40 into a close huddle, and we could talk to them. We can no longer do that today. So how do we group them? How do we move them about? How do we space them as we do different drills and trainings? Of course, we had to talk about face coverings. When will they be required? When are they not necessarily required? And kind of settled on, you know, if you're involved in a vigorous physical activity where wearing that face covering is difficult, then we allowed you to not wear that. And I'll give you an example such as, you know, running up and down a basketball court currently or maybe participating in cross-country, things like that. But then we also said, when you're not participating, then you do need to wear face covering. So if you're on the, on the sideline, waiting on the bench, we do expect you to wear those masks. If you're standing around waiting for instruction, we expect you to wear those face coverings. So, so all those things were things we had to talk about and plan for. How do we sanitize? You know, we had to work with our custodial staff. And Ruben Dominguez and his staff did a, did a super job of presenting us with all the latest upgraded materials to use to sanitize equipment. I mean, I saw coaches and kids wiping down balls in between drills. We had hand sanitizer where you enter, where you exit as you move throughout the workout area. So all those things had to be planned for and purposely put into place. We did much of this work in the early going outside. So the trainers and coaches had to move weights and all kinds of manipulatives outside and plan for the activities that, you know, that are important to getting athletes into condition to, to compete later on. We had to talk about, you know, self-assessment and talk with the students about all the signs and symptoms of COVID and how, how they should deal with that, how they should report it. And I'll probably let Matt Owens talk a little bit more about, you know, the tool that we use to do that even to this day. We had to plan for hydration. You know, it was no longer, could we put out what we call a cow and have every kid walk up and, and grab the nozzle and drink from it? So students had to start bringing their own water bottles or we had to purchase some hands-free hydration stations. So we did all those things to try and keep our athletes safe. And we even had to talk about where they placed their own water bottles because what you find the first day was they, they would simply set them in one large area together. And then when you said water break, they all tried to run together. And we had to rush over and say, no, 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 that's, that's not what we're, what we're wanting right now. So again, a lot of those things we've had to work through. As I said, everything was done outside in the beginning. That was so mandated by the UIL. How we did drills, how many people could be involved in drills? What kinds of drills? A lot of those things were mandated from the UIL to kind of guide us along the way. And then the longer we were doing that, then the little bit more loose, shall I say, the restrictions became as we got closer to, you know, actual starts of seasons, football, volleyball, those sorts of things. So then we moved to the indoor activities. Volleyball, what about getting into the weight room? How many people can we have on a volleyball court? How many students can be in a weight room? And they gave us guidance there and formulas to use to help, help us plan for all the safety practices that were needed. Again, how we practice had to be changed. You know, maybe some of the weight room exercises themselves had to change. How do we spot for safety? How do we get students in and out of the restrooms? You know, you just can't let six of them walk in there together anymore. So we had to plan all those things. And again, behind all of that was supervision. And as I mentioned earlier, I couldn't be more proud of the job that our coaches and our athletic trainers have done along the way to keep our student athletes as well as themselves safe. All right, next slide. So now, as we move closer to opening the school doors and whether that involved virtual learners or our on-campus learners, that brought a new set of challenges. Again, grouping and movement as we started practicing actual team sports. How do we get students from the school building into the locker rooms? How do we get students who are arriving on campus into and out of locker rooms? How do we assign lockers within locker rooms? Had to change. No longer would you find necessarily a varsity locker room. You would find varsity athletes scattered throughout the building. So we didn't contain spacing and social distancing. When we release kids to go into locker rooms, we had to kind of space that out so that, again, we didn't have so many students in our locker rooms all at one time. Schedules were adjusted within the campuses to, to keep students purposely separated. Then as we moved into starting to compete, games and travel, we had more questions and considerations. What practices are we going to use for normal game activities in terms of where do we sit? How do we sit? How do we travel? You know, we settled on allowing students and parents to transport themselves to games. So unlike anything I've seen in my 35 years, I could be standing outside the gate to a stadium or a gym and see students drive up and get out of their cars and walk into the building. But that's a much different practice from, you know, what we've always done. We said we travel together. We, we go home together. We do everything as a team, but we had to adjust, you know, all those things. Seating charts became very, very important in case we had to do social contact tracing or anything like that. So lots, lots of different practices. Locally, we had to make decisions about things that students have enjoyed. They considered it to be a part of game night, things like tunnels. You know, we made a decision that tunnels was just one thing that brought people down onto the fields that hung around to provide those tunnels, but it also provided an opportunity for kids to gather in a small area. And we decided that was, again, not something that we wanted to do during these times. Team photos, you know, we don't take team photos anymore. We take individual photos, and then they're photoshopped. And then as seasons start to complete, people start, you know, thinking about, what about banquets? Can we get together to, to celebrate all the successes that we've had? And again, we've had to make, you know, decisions. And some of those, again, not necessarily popular with all, but hopefully everyone realizes that these decisions are made with safety in mind always at the foremost. So, so banquets currently are virtual. Again, maybe. We hope that those things can change in the near future. I know some sports have put banquets off and pushed them back into the spring hoping that, you know, these changes will come about. And again, no one hopes that more than, than all of us involved. But so we've had to make some decisions there. What about signing day activities? They're, they've come and gone in some cases, and they're coming up very quickly. And we've had to make some decisions there that are different from what we've done in the past. You know, just unfortunately, we can't bring extended families together and bring everyone into a gym and, and have all the student athletes celebrate each other's successes and, and have cupcakes and do things like that that we've always done and cherished as a part of, of these activities. So we had to make a lot of, you know, decisions like that. As we, as we start, you know, holding these, these games, we had to think about spectators, spacing them out. We've marked every, every seat in every gym and every stadium is marked. There are, there's stickers that allow people to know where they should or should not sit. You know, we've had to make decisions about attendance. How many people can attend based on what local health authorities are telling us? You know, what, what does it mean to attend? Which, which to us has meant you have to wear a mask. You have to practice social distancing. You have to keep your mask on. And again, we capped any attendance at no more than 50%. We've had to look specifically at the different venues. They're not all the same. Some are larger than others. And that's meant that, that there are different practices throughout the school district depending on the capacity of the various, the various venues and depending upon the sport. So again, those things, we kind of set some standards out there, but they do vary somewhat. And so between middle and high school, things are not necessarily the same. How do we allow for people to attend? How do we try and guarantee that parents can attend? And so that's involved different, different things. In our middle schools, we've gone to a ticketing system. We get so many tickets each week, and it's based upon where you're going to play. Some of our larger gyms, student athletes come home with maybe up to four tickets. And some of our smaller venues, they get two. And then as we're moving into some of our spring sports, without just going into each one of those right now, we're having to make those same kinds of decisions about how many people will we allow in? Will we give some tickets to student athletes to share with their families? And all those things. So again, venue capacity drives some of those decisions. And all, all along, again, as we continue to, as I've kind of articulated in the beginning, "monitor and adjust," we've tried to keep safety in the forefront of all our decisions. So with that, I think I'll go ahead and turn it over to Lisa Robuck, the director of fine arts.
Good evening, everyone. And it's very nice to be here this evening to talk with you. First, I'd like to introduce my team. I have an incredible team. Tim Loke, our Assistant Director of Visual and Performing Arts. Jaeger Lloyd, our Assistant Director of Fine Arts over instrumental music. And Marla Volk, our Dance Coordinator, who is also a part-time dance teacher at Westwood High School. And Betty Jo Byrne, I'm here at the PAC with her. She's our PAC and auditorium manager. And so they're all here this evening as well for answering any questions that come up. This fall, I have to give, both spring and fall, I have to give a huge shout out to our incredible nearly 350 fine arts teachers who have continued to modify instruction to meet the needs of both our virtual students and our in-person students that are in their classes. You know, they've done things that have never been done before, and we are so incredibly grateful and proud and happy to work alongside with them. Just a distinction, we have classes, fine arts classes, that happen during the day, and those are curricular classes. They're TEAC-based, and they're electives, and they're part of the curriculum. And then, of course, in fine arts, we also have extracurricular components. We continued those extracurricular components in a total voluntary manner throughout the spring and throughout the fall. Some examples of that, and we can talk more about other things that you may have questions about tonight, but some examples were our pep bands that attended the football games, our dance teams that attended the football games, as well as a multitude of before and after-school rehearsals, to name just a few. Now, during the spring semester, we are hoping to continue with all these things. And fingers crossed, hopefully, add in some in-person performances with safety precautions in place as our COVID stages allow. So if you could go to the next slide. So just as Dwayne was talking about, different protocols he has in place, you know, we've kidded around the office that we have developed more documents, you know, probably since the spring than we've ever developed in our lives. But we are showing you just a sampling of some that we have posted. So fine arts has been following, of course, the UIL guidelines. It's been mentioned before, as well as the district guidelines. And both are linked here in the first bullet. But additionally, this summer, we developed and followed a safety framework that's linked on the next bullet. And this is a pretty detailed document that outlines teacher responsibilities, student responsibilities, sanitizing procedures for the classroom, as well as instructional delivery, travel within the district, and other requirements. It also includes links to the latest aerosol studies that are of particular interest to our band members and their families. Most recently, we have developed protocols for when, hopefully sooner rather than later, that we are able to safely open our performing facilities if the COVID stages allow. This document outlines a very slow and measured opening for performances. For example, it outlines how many performers that can be safely on stage with social distancing, audience members and ticketing for events, live stream options that we can have with those events additionally to get more audience members able to see, and other safety procedures. And if you want to go to the next slide. So all those documents are posted on our finearts-roundrockisd.org website. And to conclude this portion and get to the questions, I will just add that we continue to monitor the situation with our district leadership and make adjustments to all those documents as needed. Hopefully, these documents will be a springboard to help answer some questions this evening and in the future. And please know that anytime you have questions, you can contact me, one of the team members, and, and we will get that answer for you or start working on an answer. And now I turn it over to Ms. Caputo.
Thank you so much, Dwayne and Lisa. We appreciate it. And before I jump into the questions, I just want to say I left off one important introduction. Our Area Superintendent of the Cedar Ridge Learning Community, Dr. Nate T. Guerrero is joining us tonight as well. We've been pleased to have area superintendents join us for all of these town halls. And their perspective and view is so important because they do oversee our principals, and they're on campuses every day. So they really have that, that boots-on-the-ground perspective that we, we value so much. So we will jump right into the questions. And anyone that has questions, please feel free to use that Q and A icon down at the bottom of your screen. The first one is a little bit for, actually, it's for, it's for Dwayne and Lisa. Why are the rules different for football than other sports or fine arts? For instance, football was allowed to have spectators, paper programs, hold halftime, allowed to sell concessions and merchandise. Stance, on the other hand, has been told they're not allowed to sell merchandise in person, self-concessions, have intermission. Why are their rules different? And I would imagine that the venue has something to do with it. But Dwayne, do you want to start, and Lisa can join in?
Yeah, I would definitely say the venue has something to do with it. Also, there, there are some decisions that are left at the campus level, you know, related to concession stands, things like that. In some cases, booster clubs have, have been really willing to jump on board. And we've had some cases this year where sometimes some of the booster clubs and their members have been a little bit hesitant. So some of those things are decided at the campus level, some of them by the venue. I know we're definitely guided by, you know, some of the decisions that come out from the local food authorities. And I'm trying to, you know, reach for the right word, but the food departments, I would say that, but locally. So some of those things influence also what we provide or if we provide at our concession stands, as an example.
And one of the things that we've really talked about and grappled with are concessions. First of all, when you're in a performing arts center, so I'll go to that first, we don't allow food inside the auditorium anyway. I mean, it's, it's just a rule, so they, they wouldn't be able to take food inside the auditorium. And so we would have food in the lobby. And our lobby spaces, depending on, well, actually, all of our lobby spaces, the Performing Arts Center and Stony Point and Cedar Ridge are smaller. And so if we were having food inside that lobby with people with masks off, and we're also trying to keep our lobbies somewhat clear and funnel people in and out. If you look at our safety protocols for opening these facilities so that they wouldn't linger in the lobby and be close together. So this is a safety precaution. And again, it all depends on the COVID stages. We may be able to relax those rules, but that, that's the reason for not having concessions at this point in our lobbies at our performing arts centers. We also have very small concession areas, which means that the parent volunteers or the other volunteers, any volunteers that would be working the concessions would be in a very close proximity to each other if they were working in our small concession areas. So at this point, those are the safety measures that we have in place.
I think you made a really good point about the different stages. You know, this, this pandemic has not gone, you know, in a straight graph. It has valleys and peaks, and we are currently in stage five. And so what might have happened during one season will not necessarily be what's happening during another season. So that's a, that's a great point. Because my team actually posts different Because my team actually posts information on the dashboard, I might be able to partially answer this question. And it's really asking for qualitative data that I don't think we have at our fingertips right now. But after my answer, Lisa or Dwayne, you might can jump in with maybe some quantitative or anecdotal answers. So the question is, what percent of COVID cases on the Round Rock ISD dashboard are linked to athletics versus fine arts extracurriculars versus regular classroom? How do transmission rates from student to student or between student and teacher code vary between the three? What I can tell you about the dashboard is the information that we have that is solely, it's not virtual students. It is on-campus learners, but we also include then if students are coming on campus to participate in extracurricular activities. So that is a student who is regularly on campus or an employee who's regularly on campus. On the dashboard, we don't, we, we provide the number of positive cases. We break it down by student and staff and the number of their close contacts, but we're not on the dashboard. And that would, that would be, since we update every day, that would be a significant undertaking to break it down to that level. However, our Director of Health Services, Brandy Hafner, and our District COVID Coordinator Sharon Wilks are tracking that and they work very closely with the Williamson County and City's Health Department, as well as Austin Public Health. They, they talk to folks from those departments every single day. The Health Department see that information in real time and they do have some of that granular data. And both Brandy and Sharon have presented to our Board of Trustees where they've gone back and done some, some studies on the data, looking at the transmission rates in the classroom as opposed to athletics. Lisa or Dwayne, is there anything you want to add there in terms of looking at those transmission rates?
No, I obviously don't have exact figures at my, at my fingertips. Like you mentioned, it's numbers that are actually would be changing daily. So I don't have that information at this time.
I did anticipate that this question would be asked and I did have a conversation with Brandy Hefner about it. And she said, it's just very tricky to trace because our students are often involved in a lot of different activities that cross over. So we don't have clear data at this point on that, just because of the way. And Dr. Guerrero, I don't want to mean to put you on the spot, but you may know, or Dr. Presley, you may know more about that tracking than we actually do. I will tell you that we have had very few cases in fine arts. There've, there've been a few that we know about that, you know, of course, once you get a case, say, on a dance team or in the band, then you have to be careful about close contact, but we have not had many of those at all.
I can, I can weigh in on that, Lisa. Thank you. So all the other work, so athletic practices and participation. We've more recently had some with fine arts, but that's not, in comparison to athletics, it's not the same. So the spread of the virus seemed to have been more prevalent in athletics with all the protocols and the precautions. So yes, I would answer, yes, we've had more cases that have been extended from athletics and more recently, some from fine arts, but to a much lesser level. So that's, those are my comments on that. And Nancy, if you want, Dr. Guerrero, if you want to add anything, that's, that'll be good.
I, thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Presley and Lisa. I think the big piece is we stay in constant communication with both Sharon and Brandy. And yes, it kind of fluctuates between sometimes athletics and we are seeing an increase here and there in fine arts. And then as some numbers go up, others go down. But we keep that line of communication open between our specialists and our campuses and we're alerted and monitoring closely every single day. It just, it varies dependent on what's happening within the community.
Thank you. Next question is probably more athletics. So, so Dwayne or someone on your team, if you want to pitch it to someone there, no pun intended with the baseball reference. Will practices this spring be open to parents or others to attend and watch?
Practices? Again, I think that's going to depend on what, what the trends are as we move through the spring. You know, once the, now that the vaccine is available and as we start seeing numbers, we would like to change a lot of the things that we're doing. We would love to get back to the way we were. I just don't think that's going to happen as fast or as soon as any of us would like. But again, in the idea of safety, trying to limit the amount of people that come onto a campus or that in any way might be around an area where we have our students at this time. That's kind of what's guided our decisions to this point. So I think that's all dependent on, on what we see developing over the next, you know, couple of months. But again, we're talking about four months. That's really kind of a short time period. I'm not sure I can predict that we'll make great changes in that, in that period of time.
Thank you. Switching over to, to fine arts, will high school students get to have a marching season next year? Or will they have to miss out on yet another year of marching band? And we know that was heartbreaking for not just our students, but our band directors as well.
Yes, we already have plans underway for next year and I'm going to let Jaeger Lloyd take this one.
Good evening, everybody. We absolutely do plan on having a marching season for 2020, 2021, in the fall, obviously, 2021. 2021, 2022, excuse me. But 2020 is really where this problem began when we're talking about having a season or not. So the spring being where we do a lot of our preparation and where we get to know our numbers. We send off things for drill. We do a whole lot of things in preparation. Just the, just the preparation, not the people, in order to get them ready for the fall. So the people was the other part. We didn't have the numbers for in-person learners. We didn't have faculty able to interact in the same way. So it was really difficult to get a season off the ground. Then a lot of our circuit shows got canceled with the exception of UIL because of the late changes to distancing or to the sheets or to anything that influenced the adjudication of that contest. We decided earlier on to make sure that the students had a marching experience, but it was not going to be contest-driven. So you'll notice that in the fall, many of our bands had virtual, or not virtual showcases, in-person showcases at their JV stadiums. And one of ours had a virtual performance, which is actually really, really moving. So if you got a chance to see any of those, they were very special and it took a lot of work. So looking forward to next year, you've seen some of the things we were able to do in the fall. Hopefully, we'll be able to do more things in the spring going forward. I know some, some of our bands are already preparing their shows and doing some marching rehearsals. But again, we're drawing back to our COVID-19 protocols. We have to follow those. So we're going to work within that system, but we do plan on putting on productions in fall 2021.
Jaeger, if I could stick with you just for a little bit, I think, and this isn't just based on this question, but lots of questions that, that we get, and this is natural. I think sometimes people tend to think, well, things going on here in our community where we live and things are going on normally outside of that community. We hear that a lot, whether it's bringing kids back to school or transitioning classes. But I know that, that you talk with your colleagues around the state and sometimes around the nation. You mentioned that some of these shows were canceled because of, you know, there, there were no, no one was able to participate. And so this question is wondering, you know, there's other districts that have allowed marching seasons and drawing the comparison that, you know, there were football players on the field. There were, there were dancers on the field and why not marching band? So I'm sure they'll be happy to know that, that it's in the works for next season and we have to monitor the conditions. But can you talk a little bit about, you know, sort of how, what we did compared with districts around the state? And then also maybe the differences of why different decisions were different from marching band as opposed to dancers and cheerleaders and football players, who also operated under much different protocols?
Right. So one of the first things that I talked about was numbers. And as everyone probably knows at this point, bands are usually big. But I don't think people understand that band takes about 98% of your population of the program. So if we don't have that, we don't become competitive with people in the state, people in the nation. And in other places, we had, they had different protocols on their campuses and their districts. And for everybody who's listening, I guess, if you, or if you're curious, I judge for some of these circuits. So it's not like we're making these decisions based on Round Rock, Texas all the time. Looking at the national scale, Music For All, the Midwest Clinic, obviously, just ended theirs, their virtual. A lot of our industry went virtual. So a lot of, of the decisions were based on that track. Now, looking at how things are transmitted between group sizes and, and looking at how those sports or how those activities, like cheerleading are being done. If you're losing, think about, you know, a football team. Let's say you had an offensive line that's supposed to protect the quarterback. Well, if your right tackle and your left tackle or something like that for your defensive line, it doesn't really matter what line it is, but basically, if you're losing one of those people, there's a big problem. If you have no one to replace them, there's a hole and the quarterback's going to get sacked. So it's, it's more of a team activity in some ways where it takes that 98%. And when we have holes on the field, it negatively affects our scores. It negatively affects the performance for the students because we don't have the same audio environment. That included with the six feet of distance, it didn't look like the same activity. So it's important to understand the moves you made first being safety, but also being the integrity of the activity in Round Rock ISD was the forefront of those decisions. So to your question about the state and the nation and all that stuff, Round Rock ISD is where we work and where we live. And if our policies and instructional environments don't allow us to move forward in the same ways that our colleagues will, we're sticking with Round Rock ISD because those are our students. So as we're doing right now with the town hall, I think it's good for us to have these dialogues. But eventually, it kind of stops with us with safety. We want to make sure that all of our students, just like you heard earlier about our COVID-19 outbreaks not being crazy or, actually, we were very safe. We didn't have, this is the first band I've heard of, was very recent. So I'm very proud of what our, our high school, middle school teachers have done, both on band and orchestra side. They've done great.
Yeah, that's great. And Jenny, I will just add that if you look at the state in particular, the larger the school district, for example, 6A did not have nearer as many bands competing at UIL. They were the largest category, the, the smallest category of bands that actually participated. And the larger the school district, the more urban the school district, the more highly populated the area around them seemed, it, it, it really played out that way. The more rural school districts were able to still compete. And that's just how it looks. That's just how it has looked across the districts.
Yeah. Next question could be for, for either side of the house. What will the district do at these events to enforce masks on? I've been to events this year where spectators were not wearing masks. I'm sure that's a constant struggle.
Yeah, I mean, it's one of those things where number, number one, we require them for admittance. We do what we can through public service announcements. We do have, you know, just kind of a limited administrative staff available to chase down some of those things. I can say that, you know, a lot of the events that I attend, I'm actually very, very proud of the fans in Round Rock ISD and the percentage of those who are wearing masks. I can say that I've also been a part of hosted events in the district for smaller schools or as Lisa just mentioned, a little more rural. And you definitely find that the practices and the philosophies of, of different, different people that come to us from those type areas would differ from ours. So we're doing everything we can to encourage it. We, we are constantly using messaging, both inside and outside the stadium during the contests. And as I said, requiring it for admittance. And again, for the most part, I have been proud of how our fans have obeyed, how they have followed along with those, with those steps and guidance.
This next question contrasted with the few before, kind of shows how split people are on, on these, these topics. Dr. Mark Esq., Austin Aram Health Authority, has recently announced all school ages are outpacing the community positivity rates and asked parents to choose the virtual option for their children if possible. Dr. Esq. further said, "The risk is extracurricular activities, the risk is shared transportation." What specifically is Round Rock ISD doing to communicate this message? And how can Round Rock ISD justify the risk of continuing to offer extracurricular activities at all, despite the warning, despite current all-time high COVID transmission rates, hospitalizations and deaths during the stage five? This is not a way to be keeping our kids, teachers and community as safe as possible. Dr. Presley, do you want to weigh in on that first?
Yeah, I can do that. I mean, our schools are open, so kids who want in-person learning and activities have the opportunity to do that. We also are allowing extracurricular activities for our students who are virtual, so they can come up and participate. You know, if they desire to do that. So I don't know. I understand the, the question, but we're basically allowing the best of both worlds. So you can be virtual and still come up and play basketball, if that's what you want to do. And you can be in-person and participate in anything, obviously. So I don't know if that answers the question, Jenny, but we're trying to provide parent options. And I want to remind everybody that participation in extracurricular activities, whether it's fine arts or athletics, is totally voluntary. Nobody has to do that. So with Ms. Robuck and, and Coach Wirek on the call, everybody needs to know that if they, their desire is not to participate in those activities, they do not have to do that for any kind of grading or credits or anything like that.
And Dr. Guerrero, I wonder, sort of from a campus perspective, if you can talk a little bit about balancing, you know, these different risks and, and a lot of folks are concerned about the social emotional well-being of students right now. It's been a long 10 months. I'm a mom of a middle schooler. It's difficult. And parents want to keep their kids safe, but they, they want to, I know Trustee Bessa feels this too. You also want to provide them some activities that they love and it's, it's, it's difficult. There's no way around it.
It very much is a balancing act. We, as area superintendents, meet with our principals every week, typically a couple of times a week. And I, I do want to celebrate our campus COVID coordinators because safety is the priority. And I can tell you that as we talk about offering options on both sides, participation or remaining virtual, that we honor both. And if students are in the building, we are operating, implementing those protocols with social distancing. Our coordinators, along with all of our staff, do a really great job of monitoring where students have been and so forth and why we're able to quickly respond if there is a case with close contacts. So it really is a team effort and we couldn't do this without the expertise of all the coordinators that, of course, have been trained and meet regularly with both Brandy and Sharon. So I hope that kind of answers your question. It is, has been a long 10 months. I get it. Serving Round Rock ISD and also being a mom, and it is a balancing act. But again, we, every day, we start with safety in mind and really monitoring those pieces and offering everything that we possibly can to our students while ensuring that level of safety.
Jenny, if I might add or might kind of pitch this over to Matt Owens, I think he may be able to share again some of the, some more perspective on, on some of the safety measures that, that take place on a daily basis or even, you know, specific at the campus level. So Matt, you want to jump in on this one?
Absolutely, Coach. Thank you. You know, one of the things we're doing in athletics every day is our Rank One Daily Screen. And that is our athletic software program that the district provides for us. And it is, kids can do it on their phone, through their phone app. We've created QR codes and they can do it through our online forums platform. This has stopped a lot of cases even coming to, which has been huge. From the, from the safety standpoint there, we've been able to base that and kept our athletes and our coaches safer because a lot of those problems have never come to our campuses. Also with transportation, I know that was in this question. We have really had to think outside the box on buses. The magic number is 14. Everybody sit to the window, caddy, and we diagonally stack that where it's more than six foot apart and we can socially distance that. The cameras on the bus have been big to help us with contact tracing. And I think that's all in that question for, that that's asking.
Thank you, Matt. We're going over to choir now. How was choir impacted? Are practices virtual or in-person? Our district or Going over to choir now. How was choir impacted? Are practices virtual or in person? Are district or regional events happening?
Yes, they're both. So if the student has chosen virtual, they're tuning in virtually. If the student has chosen in person, they're singing in class with masks on. I'm actually a singer and believe it or not, it works. You can sing with a mask on. And I've been amazed at hearing the sound that's come out of the choirs. There have been performances, there have been out, there have been virtual performances, but they've also been performances outdoors. I'm right over here by McNeil right now. There was a holiday performance out in front of the school. Everybody brought their lawn chair and sat socially distanced with masks on and the students sang socially distanced with masks on. And and I'm just reading the chat and I know that there's concern that there aren't performances, but there are many performances being planned. That are coming up. Theater one act is being planned. So there's, there's a lot of performances that there've been, there have been plays. There have been virtual plays and there have been other plays. So I'm happy to continue to answer any of those questions. But yes, we're we're performing and we're singing. It just looks a little different.
You one of those, as you're saying that and we, and just so our, I want our, I don't want our participants to be frustrated. There's a lot of, a lot of you asking the same question. So we're trying to, rather than ask the same question over and over. I'm trying to group those together and really get meaningful answers and examples to what you're, to what you're asking. But to piggyback on that, one person is asking, you mentioned the possibility for performances in the spring. Would they be held with limited or no audience and would mask wearing be required? And clearly mask wearing will be required.
Yes. For now. Mask wearing will be required and that's why we develop the protocols to be prepared to open the auditoriums. And we, we've got ideas and I'm going to let Tim talk a little bit about our ticketing. We have been working with our ticket vendor that tickets can be assigned. So Tim, would you like to elaborate a bit on that?
Sure. So we're very fortunate that the district has a partnership with. A ticketing vendor, a national ticketing vendor, and we have worked with them to be able to. Once we get auditoriums and everything where we're going to be having. Events that would require us to say, count the number of people that we can allow in the space. And kind of control the amount of audience that shows up. Those can be purchased in a touchless way on a phone. And then they can be shown on a phone or printed out at home and shown to an usher that will allow. The right number of people to be in an audience. We've, we've, as Lisa has alluded to. We've planned ways to socially distance within our different houses, which are all different sizes. And so we'll be able to do that. I know that one of the things that Lisa touched on was performances. We, we've had a number and are having a number of theater performances outside, especially as the weather gets nicer. There, they are taking advantage of that. And I did see in the, in the questions about musicals. We do have some musicals that will be happening outside. I've been very proud of our theater faculty for thinking outside the normal theatrical box. And being able to produce a quite a bit of work, either in the virtual realm or looking at alternate sites. Like a parking lot or an amphitheater or a stadium space. So we do have those kinds of things coming in the planning stages. I think it's important to remember that teachers have had to pivot and rethink their usual practices. And for some of these things, it's not super simple just to do that really fast. And there are a lot of pieces and parts that have to be thought through.
Thank you, Tim. This question says, first of all, thank you for taking the time to discuss the plan that was in place in the summer and fall of twenty twenty. And proposals for the future regarding the future outside of a U I L mandated shutdown. Will it be left to the school programs to self quarantine for a period of fourteen days if there's a widespread outbreak at certain school? Mirroring what happened at some football programs at some high schools in the fall is an example. Is the plan, is that the planned reaction of something like that happens or is that isolated? I'll just kind of kick it off by saying there are very specific protocols to when programs are shut down. And that's in consultation with both of our health departments. And that call really starts with our district COVID coordinator and director of of health services. But either Dwayne or Lisa, I think, could jump in and talk about this. Dwayne might have had, he's had, definitely had more experience with it.
Yeah, I mean, and just, it's just what you said. There are definitely specific protocols that are in place. There are some within the district's sport. There are some rules in place that were kind of agreed upon prior to the start of the season. You know, how many, how many kids or what percentage of a team that might go into quarantine would constitute. You know, shutting their, closing the whole team down for, you know, fourteen days at a time. So those things definitely exist as far as the future. I would say again, any decisions that are made will always take into account student safety. And and I don't think any of us would want to jeopardize and would not jeopardize student safety. If if we have to shut a program down, we'll shut a program down. And that's, that's just simply the way, the way it is.
We haven't had to shut anything down. I think our bigger obstacle of Mr. Lloyd referred to it earlier. Is just the number of students that we have participating virtually and the number that we have participating in person. Can make it difficult to put together performances. As Tim said, there's many moving parts to putting together a performance. And so I, if COVID allows and we don't have any unforeseen outbreaks. I do believe you're going to see a lot more performances starting in the spring. We're just, we're just lagging behind because we had to think things differently. I, 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 I think that if if everyone can just be patient, you're going to see more performances outside and inside. I know there have, there were several, I went to an orchestra concert that happened. I can't remember. It was, I think it was December and it was very well done, small ensembles. So we're, we're trying to think more in the small ensemble realm. So that we can get the kids performing and doing what they do best.
Thank you. Mr. Lloyd, this one's probably for you. And I think you, you answered it at least in part in the last question, but there's a lot of marching band questions. Want to make sure people feel like they fully understand.
You want to go back to the fall, huh? I'm kidding.
So this, so this question is, what specific exceptions have U I L allowed to make sure the kids get the experience they signed up for? What is different versus past year? So like I said, you talked a little bit about it, but maybe, what, what did we do this year? To make the experiences enriching as it could be, but definitely looking different.
For our district, the way the questions were, it sounds like what did U I L do? And that, so those are two separate things.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think it's probably assuming that. Exceptions that U I L placed on us, but but I would.
Right.
What it looked like for our kids.
So here's what's a little bit different, I think, that not, not everybody understands. Because we have a band does not necessarily mean that they are U I L sanctioned all the time. When we participate in a U I L activity is when it becomes that way. So a good example would be, let's pretend that the Round Rock Band is going to Grand Nationals like they have before. And they decided that they were not going to do the U I L state marching contest or any of the U I L contests. They can elect to do that. There will be a penalty. I wouldn't suggest it, but maybe they do just do the region contest. That means they have to remain within the eight hour rehearsal rule per week. So since that, for that example, being eight hours, this year, U I L already knocked out the eight hour rule. But something else that negated that eight hour rule for us in Round Rock ISD was the way that we had our instructional environment, which is potted. Or coordinated, however, whatever word you would like to use. We didn't have it by band. We had it by specific students. So it was really difficult to get those eight hours in or more. Because then the band teacher or orchestra teacher or whoever would be working twenty seven, forty. And this is before and after school. So because of the staffing. So that's something that you can kind of see a difference already between how many maybe people are coaching on a football team. Versus how many people are coaching a band just by pure numbers and ratio. It's not a knock on anybody. It's just the facts. So if we're moving forward into like, when we're talking about. Another U I L rule that changed was we had to maintain a distance of six feet when possible, when drill moves would allow. I believe the, I don't remember the exact wording. But that translation not being extremely clear, and we want to make sure that we're all right with Round Rock ISD. Also putting it side by side. Once again, we had to maintain six feet of distance when we're playing our instruments with covers on. We maintain that distance in the stands as well, if you noticed, and I'm going to get to that in a second. But like, when you have these, these stipulations of six feet apart. If you know how far, far apart or how many yards six feet is, it doesn't look like a real form once you get a bunch of students or not enough students out there. It kind of looks like students standing randomly in a square-ish. You won't be able to see curvilinear forms. You won't be able to get knee dressing because of the distance. So those are coming to the main things that U I L really affected us with, besides some of the instructional environment things that happened here. And I saw a couple of things about pet band that I kind of want to address really quickly. I know we use the word pet band, but that's only to refer to the size. Because we didn't want to, A, put too many students in the stands, B, take over too many stands. Because we still had to sell tickets for the football team and actually have room for the spectators because we had a stipulation of ten feet away from any spectator. But this, but in the stack of six feet, all that stuff, you probably saw stickers. You probably saw how we were sitting in the stands. That's how many we could fit in there with drill team and anybody else who wanted to go to the game. So. The pet bands were separate from any of the, of the marching activities that were happening on the side. So I'll use Westwood High School as an example. They had a pet band of maybe eighty or so that was going to these games. Maybe it's the same kids, maybe it's different students. But on the side, they had maybe after school perform, after school rehearsals with almost a hundred fifty students ready to go and rehearse. Now that grew over time. It wasn't immediate and they still maintained their distance. They were very safe, taking temperatures at games and everything. But it has to do with the in person and virtual learners. Almost every one of our schools, our high school bands offered the exact same opportunities for students, but they were met very differently. I'm not sure if that was advertising. I don't control everything that comes out of their computer. But I do think that every one of them offered this, with the, maybe the exception of one in a different form. But they all had an opportunity to participate based on the stipulations that were put forward by U I L. And the distance they had to create from March twenty twenty to. Well, now. Instrumentally or musically, it's very, there's a lot of practice. That's the best thing I can say.
Thank you so much for sharing that. That's helpful. Speaking of spectators, and we recently had some information go out about spectators for athletic events. This question says, why is the district charging for soccer matches but not for basketball or baseball games? I would rather each team member get four tickets for free like basketball.
And I can say we are no longer charging for, for soccer. Yeah, I think initially that may have happened for a couple of games in the beginning. But once we started looking at all the sports across the board, as we were going to continue throughout the spring. We made a decision that we're not going to charge for anything other than baseball or softball tournaments that are coming up. And held on our campuses because those events are and have always traditionally been fundraising activities for those programs. And and there's tremendous amount of cost that goes into hosting those events as well. And so in, in talking with our baseball coaches and in those sort of, you know, people that are most vested in those activities. We said, okay, you know, tournaments, a lot of those people are coming in from, you know, outside our communities and they're, they're going to be used to paying and so. So they will charge a gated mission at tournament play only. Everything else throughout the district, I think for the remainder of the spring and in the school year, you won't find a charge at the gate.
And I think I said last night to totally different question that, you know, a key word for everyone right now is flexibility. And so we are, we're, as you said, monitor and adjust earlier and that was a, an adjustment that was made in, in the moment. And so that's indicative of what we're dealing with this, this school year. So let's, that was one of our. Questions submitted in advance. So let's go back to some that are live. Moving forward, will kids need to be enrolled in in person school before they're able to participate in any in person extracurricular activities? I know we can speak to this year. We really don't know for next year. Is that, is that fair?
That's fair. That's fair. I think, I think we can say that that's something that we will take a look at and continue to discuss. It is something that varies around the state and by school district. You'll find that there are school districts that operate exactly like we do, allow both on campus learners and. Virtual learners to participate in much the same way that we do. And there are school districts that allow or have restrictions that only on campus learners may participate. So I would say, yes, there'll be discussion moving forward, but I can't predict what the, the outcome would be at this time.
Okay.
Can I chime in on that one just for a minute? Because it's something that the board has talked about. And obviously, we don't know what the circumstances are going to be next year. We don't know what, what we're facing, but it's definitely something that we've talked about on the board. And I think that ultimately it's a discussion that's ongoing on the board. And and the, and the board will have an opinion as to whether we make that decision or not. I'm not sure.
Thank you, trustee Vessa. Speaking of those tournaments, Dwayne, we have a question. Why is the district still allowing large preseason multi-school tournaments for close contact masked free sports, including teams? At that tournament from far beyond our district, teams we never play in a regular season and games that do not count towards our U I L ranking. During the highest county peak of cases. Fine Arts has had to cancel all non-U I L events, yet Athletics is allowed to continue non-U I L games. Should we not focus risk on games that count and play nearby teams for safety? So maybe just making sure that the accurate information is out there if that's the case or, and why that might be when we have those tournaments.
Sure. A lot of sports were, were by U I L's guidance not allowed to hold tournaments this year. So there were no volleyball tournaments. There were no basketball tournaments. And again, the first thing you notice about those two is we're talking about indoor activities. So they very quickly eliminated tournaments for those sports. Then in, in looking forward, the U I L did say or give us guidance that we could hold tournaments. But they also gave us some guidance in terms of, again, spectator capacity and things like that. So as we move to some of these, these outdoor sports, we are limiting capacity. We are emphasizing social distancing. So again, by, by doing both, we do feel like we can, we can hold these particular tournaments safely.
Thank you. And there's a question I'm going to answer live that. Has, this has been brought up by a few people on, on social media that there was a department photo of Brown Rock ISD police department SROs. Didn't wear a mask and Dwayne, you mentioned how with our team photos, we're not doing group photos. And you know, why that was the case. And I just want to say there was clear guidance given to the coaches and campuses. We want to protect our students absolutely a hundred percent. And so we are doing that. We did that with our board of trustees photo. In fact, we did individual photos and Photoshop them together. That was a situation where the, our new SROs were at an outside venue. They were masked and decided to, to take their masks off for one quick photo because they have no pictures of them together as a department without wearing masks. And we haven't and wouldn't post those on the district website. They're, they're for archival purposes. I know some photos are out there, but I just want to make that clear. These are new rules and protocols that everyone's getting used to. And I would say too, that all of our SROs are in that one A group. And have all had the opportunity to have their first, first dose of vaccine. So I just want to be clear that, that our, we made sure that those rules are followed on our campuses. And we're protecting our kids, but that was a little bit different of a situation. But we're all also learning as we move forward in this. So I just wanted to ensure that we answered that question. So let's go to. Believe this is our last one that we got in advance. It says, this is more of a statement than a question. My son is an on campus student and in athletics. Most students in athletics are staying home and only coming to campus for sports. Some of the urging of coaches and some because on campus learning is not comfortable. I do not understand how it can be acceptable for students to come to campus for sports where masks sometimes are not required like basketball. But can stay home for classes where there are minimum attendance requirements. Support of athletics continuing. Don't we have this backwards? Dr. Guerrero, that might be one for you to talk about the fact that there's, there is certainly attendance requirements for our virtual learners. And that that's a parental choice, but that are, certainly our, our virtual platform is meant to be engaging and rigorous.
Yes, indeed. I, I will simply affirm what, what you've already said. So, and it goes back to the options that we, that we absolutely provide to our, to our families of choice. For on campus and virtual. So from the very beginning, we, once we left that virtual. On-campus and virtual. Um, so from the very beginning, we um, once we left that virtual setting. We um said that you would have the option to go virtual or be face-to-face and that our extracurriculars would be available to. Um, those that chose to come into the building. So um, I know for more clarity, um. Would you like to ask another question just to make sure we get it all down? I lost my train of thought there for a moment.
That is okay.
Can I speak in terms of a parent perspective? Because, you know, both my kids are in athletics. And from what I, you know, I have a lot of friends whose kids, my kids are in person, but I have a lot of kid friends whose kids. Are in athletics or participating in fine arts in person and then staying virtual. And it was a decision that they made to protect our teachers and staff. They felt like they understood that participating in some of these activities incurred more risk. And they they were willing to take on that risk in their own families. But they were not willing to give that risk to the teachers and staff. Now, I know that that we have very little transmission in in-person learning. Our classrooms are very safe. But families really felt strongly about this. They wanted their kids to participate in athletics and in fine arts activities. But they just, they did not want to incur any risk on our teachers and staff. And and I, I mean, you know, I have to respect their care for our for our campuses. Um, though we aren't seeing in-person transmission, I will say that, I mean, in classrooms.
Thank you. That parent perspective is so helpful, trustee Vessa. We appreciate it. Uh, Dr. Presley had noted that he was going to answer this next question. Why is basketball allowed four tickets and cheerleaders get two and it's inside, but baseball, which is outside, only gets two tickets?
Well, we're trying to adhere to the fifty 50% capacity for a stadium or a venue. It could be a gym or it could be a stadium. We're doing that for basketball. Um, softball, baseball. And so uh, so the decision was made with our our principals was that we allowed um four tickets per student, which. Doesn't really breach that, but anybody who needs a ticket and wants to get in. To reach the 50%, we've we've allowed counters at each of our games that we have uh to count how many people are coming in. So I'm sure more cheerleading folks can come in if they want to. But uh, that was a decision that we made um. At at the executive level with our high school principals.
Any anything to add, Dwayne?
No, no, I think he he's definitely correct. Um, I mentioned earlier that venue sizes definitely differ. Um, you know, around the district and and so um that there can't necessarily be a blanket practice in some venues and in some sports. And in others, uh, we can't have, you know, something that's a little more um common throughout the district. But again, all our venues are different and all that has to be taken into consideration.
Okay. Uh, the next question, can you address the athletics signing February 3rd, as it was mentioned briefly? Will this be an event that will take place?
Um, again, we are trying to work with our campuses. We've had some conversations about. Um, you know, thinking, as someone mentioned earlier, thinking outside the box, how can we do this? Maybe uh, maybe we can hold this outside of regular school hours. And so that people don't come onto campus while students are present. Um, because again, that that's a large consideration of ours is is what um or the number of people that come onto a campus while our students are present. So we are looking at that. I know it's coming up February 3rd, as you mentioned. Um, I've had a few conversations with campus coordinators. Um, they're coming up with some ideas and plans. So we are looking for ways that that maybe that can safely occur um in, you know, very small settings, in you know, more intimate settings. Than what we're used to where everybody gathers in the gym next to each other and and supports each other and hoops and hollers. Uh, and and high-fives each other. That's the kind of stuff we're trying to avoid.
Kind of piggyback on that. There's a question about, you know, saying we're talking about the different size of venue, but there were decisions about which boosters could sell merchandise in the same venue. Um, can you can you speak to that at all where some are given priority or preference over others?
Or now, are you, if you're talking about concessions, I can say that 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 was left up to the individual campuses and their booster clubs. So the ones that did sell were those who chose to do so. Um, if you're talking about merchandise. For example, I'm I'm not really aware of merchandise sales that took place. We tried to to eliminate that to my to my knowledge.
So maybe that's a question for the campus principal then.
And Miss Jenny, I believe that question might be also about uh in the spring, if we have shows and we've talked about not having. Um, merchandise and concessions in our lobbies at our performing facilities. Um, I did want to just say that we are in discussion about moving the selling of merchandise outside. Uh, our performing facilities. Uh, we're just concerned about at this stage of COVID. That there would be too much congregating in the lobby, but we're certainly looking into ways that we could move it outside. Or move it back inside if the COVID stage is allowed.
And that kind of goes back to that's difficult to compare. I mean, different times because our the stage we've been in has has changed over the school year.
Right.
This next question I I can answer. It's how many COVID cases were specifically tracked around our ISD school? And I I can just say that information is is on our dashboard in terms of whether the transmission or we. We don't know where people might have um actually gotten COVID. There's there's really no way to be able to to trace that. But we do have contact tracers in the health department also is uh aware of every case and does contract tracing at the community level as well. But whether it's, we're not epidemiologists, so we're not able to really ascertain where someone actually contracted the virus. Um, but we are able with the help of the health department to to determine when we have clusters. Um, and when, as we've had to do twice now, this school year, we need to close down the campus because of that. And then several other cases had to close down programs for a certain time. Um, dance question, Lisa, dance and band. I'm sure dance and band. I'm sure dance and band families would gladly accept alternative locations, and this kind of goes what you're saying before, outside at the football stadium, for example. So that our children could still participate in spring shows or concerts. Has this been considered?
Yes, um, just like Tim talked about, we have some outside uh concerts coming up. Um, also, Marla, would you like to talk about the upcoming spring shows that we're hoping are going to be in our performing facility?
Sure, sure. Well, we we did have some outside performances this past fall for our ensemble dance teams. They were usually held at their campus stadium so that parents could see their kids perform in that outside venue. We're hoping that for our spring shows in the spring for dance teams, we will be able to be inside. In the auditorium with all of the safety protocols in place. But I will tell you that if for some reason we aren't able to to have our spring show inside in the manner that we would like to have. Having it outside is always, you know, is always an option. We're hoping that we'll be able to do it a little bit more. In the uh medium that we're used to, but but it's always a consideration to take it outside if needed.
Okay, thank you. Um, a question about a physicals. Are physicals required for spring sports? It seems they were for, um, in this case, I pointed out they were for cheer, but not for other sports due to COVID. Was there a blanket requirement or a blanket lifting of a requirement for that?
Um, actually, that changed this school year. So um annual physicals were not required by the U I U I L or by Round Rock ISD. So if you had a physical last year, um, you did not need to get a physical this year. The only students that we required or that the U I L required are either first-time participants in athletics, like a a new seventh grader, uh, first beginning. Uh, to participate or someone who had um questions marked on their medical history form that indicated. Um, you know, a little more uh review of their status was necessary. So if you're someone who had, you know, knee surgery last last year, one of the, you know, one of the questions was, have you had a recent surgery in the last six months or eight months? So students like that um were required to get a physical. Others of this year that have, you know, been participating and had a physical last year, uh, when we did require all to do so. We're not required to do that this year. So so the simple answer, uh, students this spring, if you participated last year. And you have no issues in your medical history, you're not required to get a physical.
Thank you for clearing that up. Um, this question is directed to athletics, but I would imagine it could apply to fine arts as well. Will there be transportation for athletics in the upcoming months or next year? Could we offer transportation in a socially distanced manner as a rule of thumb? In order for parents not feels that they're being uh in position because they need transportation for their child. Parents' work schedules are changing consistently and work environments are changing, therefore to have transportation being constant is essential for some families.
And I absolutely agree. And yes, we will always find a way, some way, to offer transportation for those for those activities. Yes.
Yes, same here. And uh, I did check in um today. Just wanted to make sure that something hadn't changed with Tina. Fawcett, our Director of Transportation, and we're still one to a seat. But if we need extra buses because we're one to a seat, then we'll get extra buses.
We've had a couple of questions um that echo this this question I'm about to read. Are we looking at limiting offseason athletics to lower the risk of jeopardizing in-season athletics? Do does football need to be practicing at school still, for example?
Um, well, again, football, like like kind of like Lisa mentioned earlier, it does, they do receive a PE credit. So um, when they're enrolled in the class, they do need to be participating in activities. Um, so we are holding offseason practices. Um, there are some new rules in place. If you are, for example, in offseason now, you can do your weightlifting before or after school for an hour and and just do activities within the school day. So that's that's kind of been a change, kind of a a year-round offseason rule um that allows you to work outside the school day. Um, but at this point in time, in order to be, you know, gaining that credit and and doing the things that we need to do um for those who that are interested. Um, yeah, I think we are going to continue to hold practices again to the best of our ability uh and as safe as they can be.
Uh, Dr. Presley, this one might be um uh best for you to answer. Has the district thought about having a COVID safety officer at these athletic events to help encourage safety with masks? Give him a little time to unmute. He might be having some technical difficulties. Dwayne, is that something that y'all have had discussions about, having someone police that, for lack of a better word?
No, no, I can't say that I've been a part of any of those conversations. Um, again, we do, you know, staff these events with campus administrators. Generally, we do provide security um at all um varsity events throughout the district. Um, but I can't say that specifically, we've talked about adding people for the specific purpose in 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 essence of of helping to enforce masks. Or even social.
Presley, I see you're unmuted now. Are you able to address that?
Yeah, no, it's a, it's been a challenge since the beginning of the year. Our administrators uh on duty for every event, whether it be volleyball or or football or basketball or whatever it may be. Uh. Um, they've had a chat, like keep your mask on, and address the need was. Want to end to a policing with our security folks that were, you know, we can ask somebody to leave a venue, of course, for sure. Um, but it's not a, we tried to try to avoid that as much as possible. So we have an added extra security to make sure we have masked police, if that's the question. Uh, to make sure it's happening. It's just kind of encouraging everybody to follow the rules and do what you need to do. And then consistently, if they don't, they're asked to leave the venue.
Right. So I mean, there's 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 significant like oversight is what you're saying already at these events, and that would just be another thing they're looking for. And that, I think that answers another question here. Could penalties be imposed for people not wearing masks? And I think the penalty is they're not allowed to stay if they're not willing to abide by the rules.
Absolutely. That's it.
And just to echo what Dr. Presley and Coach Wirick have already said. Um, our administrators do monitor and in most cases, um, when our administrators ask for a. A spectator to just a reminder of the mask, they they quickly do put it on. When we see increases of students maybe not wearing the mask, then our administrators are really great about reinforcing and reminding our students. So it goes back to that messaging so that we can continue to have these opportunities of spectators at our games and fine arts events.
We've got some sports-specific questions that I'm not positive we can answer, but I'm going to try since because we want to try to get to as many as possible. Will there be water polo club allowed this year? The swim team had swim team had their meet, so hoping this very short season they have isn't canceled for my senior. Is that a club or a sport?
Yeah, it's it's actually operates at the club level right now. Um, and I actually spoke with the U I L about that here in the last week or so. So um, it it will be a pilot program next fall under the U I L's um guidance. But for this spring, it still operates as a club uh activity. And and when I directly kind of asked the question of, is that going to be an ongoing activity this spring? Their answer was yes, to our knowledge, it is.
So that would be up to the individual club and we are allowing those clubs to operate if they would like to. Okay, awesome. What will track season look like for sub-varsity meets in Round Rock ISD?
Um, well, um, I I would say, first of all, we have to follow the limits in terms of how many teams can gather. Um, but we also follow limits about how many meets you can have. So to the extent possible, uh, we're going to give kids as many opportunities to participate as as we can. Um, I can give you this specific example. Um, we cannot hold a middle school district track meet like we have in the past. Because the U I L won't allow 11 schools to gather in one place. The 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 limit is eight. So we're having to take a look at, you know, how we're going to do that, or do we simply offer them another meet uh opportunity? Um, but yes, we we plan on on allowing sub-varsity kids opportunities to participate, just like our varsities within the rules.
Yeah. Um, the this is, uh, Dr. Guerrero, you you kind of addressed this when we talked about parent choice, virtual versus on-campus and still being able to participate. But but this um, this panelist brings out or this participant brings up something interesting. Should those that are virtual learners perhaps not participate in extracurricular activities so they don't increase the risk to our on-campus students? This is since the on-campus are with the same students daily, whereas we don't know where the virtual learners are during their days. Um, I'm wondering, and I think, Dr. Guerrero, you did really address that, but I'm wondering, uh, Coach Wirick. Is is this something that coaches are talking with their athletes about about, you know, so that they're protecting their teammates, their activity outside of sports?
Absolutely. Yeah, we 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 talk constantly with with kids about best practices. And obviously, being a good teammate uh falls into that category. So absolutely, it's it's been addressed. It's been talked about. Um, and then I think as trustee Vessa said, it has been discussed at the board level uh moving forward a little bit. They've had, you know, some brief comments, shared some comments and conversation. And and where we go, you know, moving forward is is to be determined.
Okay. Um, this is a theater and one-act play question. Um. Theater and U I L one-act play preparation and competitions will be occurring at a time when more contagious variety is spreading, when double masking and more distance are recommended by health authorities. What district-wide safety recommendations are being considered to help make sure these events can go forward with these new safety concerns? And and I know you guys were addressing some of that earlier. Um, I'm sure we're not looking just at protocols that are set in stone. We we pivot and adjust.
Now, I'm I'm going to turn this over to Tim, but I will say that U I L has come out with, uh, for example, masks will be worn during U I L one-act play this year. Um, so we've been addressing that. There's also special protocols for uh when they use the equipment. There's uh, they wear gloves. Um, so Tim can go into detail. Also, I will just remind everybody that um that's all in our protocols that are on our website as well. But Tim, would you like to give more of those details you've been discussing with the theater teachers?
Yeah, this is actually a very timely question because we're in the process of planning and teachers are in the process of really implementing. U I L one-act play rehearsals and getting getting ready for that. Um, the way U I L has constructed one-act play this season is they've made adjustments for uh COVID protocols. And the district protocols supersede in some cases in the venue. So um, what what we're working on for U I L is very much of a meshing of the U I L protocols. And what what we in Round Rock ISD feel is safe for students. So for example, um, there are multiple levels of U I L one-act and we actually host our zone, which is the first level. And we're um doing things like typically they'll have, in a normal year, they would have rehearsal and then sit around the building. Um, waiting for their turn to have performance. That requires a lot of students in in a very confined space. So this year, one of the things that we're doing is we're grouping all of the rehearsals and scheduling them in such a way that. A a campus will come, rehearse, there will be a sanitation time after their rehearsal and they leave. And then the next school will come and they don't cross each other. So they are simply coming in, doing what they need to do and going out. Same kind of thing will happen with performance where they will rotate through and they're not crossing each other and and. each other and and kind of intermingling between schools. We're do awards as either a in-person or a virtual event. We haven't made a decision as to how that is going to go. Again, we are kind of looking at the health of the community at that moment. That that'll be in March, so we're still a long ways out. Things like Lisa mentioned, dealing with equipment in UIL one-act, they all use the UIL set. They all use the light board. There there are a number of things that they all touch. So one of those procedures is is that everybody will be wearing nitro gloves. The kids who work the the light board will be using, wearing gloves. The kids who handle the UIL set will be using gloves. Everybody has to be masked on onstage, offstage, the entire time they're in the facility. So we feel like, given, given the situation, we're being as safe as possible and allowing that. And again, it's an it's an optional activity, being able to go forward.
Thank you, Mr. Luki. This next question is, given the priority of academics, PSAT, SAT, and AP testing and the higher incidence of quarantine events for athletics, has there been any review how to provide options, separate rooms or locations for athletes to take their tests when under a 14-day quarantine, but without symptoms and tested as negative? The College Board PSAT today abandoned all sophomore athletes subject to quarantine because of exposure to another player who tested positive. I guess the the first, I think, getting to the first question of that would be if a student is on quarantine, are they allowed to come to campus to take a test? And then, yeah, by my assumption was no. So so there would be no need to provide an alternate place for them, is that?
So a couple of things, Jenny. The PSAT today that was administered was for sophomores. A great opportunity, but a practice. The PSAT, the junior year, is the really critical one that makes students eligible for National Merit Scholar. And so because of the number of students that needed to test and the staffing and needing to be socially distanced, we do have a school, as you know, that is in quarantine. We couldn't respond. So students couldn't come up because they have, because they are closed currently.
Thank you. Um, and yeah, you're another concern about marching band because we know summer is such a critical time. It doesn't really begin in the fall. Is there a plan for for summer practices for band?
Honestly, that's what kind of sunk us the first time. We were kind of in the wings, figuring out what we were going to do as a district to prepare. So I mean, yes, preparation does begin in the summer, but really it does begin in the spring, as I said before. Some of our bands will be preparing starting in January. I know me personally, when I was working at Cedar Ridge, we'd start in April. The only thing that we are not allowed to do, just so everybody knows out there in the UIL world, is learn the drill. The actual drill that we're going to be marching for the fall. So there's so many things that 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 students and teachers could be doing right now. But our plan is to do everything that we've done so far, if not, you know, with more involvement, because COVID-19 hopefully will be a little bit more subsided in that time or the health of the community might be in a different place. So that's kind of our hope right now. But again, none of us here have crystal ball to be able to tell us what we're going to be doing. But I do want to say that even if that preparation does not be, is not able to occur in the summer, one of the other competitions that we do is more individually individually based. It's the Texas Music Educators Association. It's the All-State Track. Some of us have heard of All-Staters, but we've had, in this past year, we had more region and area band and orchestra kids than we've ever had. Because the students were actually working on their material rather than trying to split focus. So it's really important that we acknowledge some of the really positive things that have come from this, rather than kind of keep focusing on marching band. And it's very visible. I love it. I judge it. It was my own livelihood, too. It's not like it has anything to do with me not wanting to do it or us. So it's it's very much about the safety of the students. Are we teaching them the right skills musically? Are we teaching them how to be better humans? That's that's our big thing here. So I'm excited for our preparation when we get into the summer, because I'll be at all of those campuses, just like I was this fall. And yes, we'll be marching more than four minutes of anything. I'm pretty excited about that.
Thank you, Jaeger.
Jenny, may I just go back and one more comment on PSAT? I did want to share that for that campus, our principal did communicate, and I think this is really important, that we can continue to practice and prep for that junior year through Khan Academy. That is a completely free resource with sample questioning. So I really don't want to miss this opportunity to share that because we know how important it is, and we know that we want to ensure that our students are ready. So just a plug for that opportunity that is out there through Khan Academy.
Thank you, Dr. Guerrero.
And Jenny, I'm sorry, I just wanted to comment. Good evening. I apologize for being late. I was on another call. But I've heard a lot of good things about, I know there's a question in the chat about equity. And I hear a lot of good things here. People are thinking about how we can deliver the same experience, no matter what the extracurricular is. So that's very encouraging to me. Having activities outside, I love that. Tim, you know, you talked about when the weather gets nice. Being from the Midwest, what are you talking about? I mean, you know, so I I'm I'm really encouraged by this. So and I also want to extend the invitation, you know, to the coach and Lisa. Please use me as a resource. If, you know, if I can sit down on meetings, anything that I can do, because I love the conversations going on here. So I just wanted to to chime in on that.
I just have to say Texas is a little different than Wisconsin, Mr. Street.
Yeah, it's not 40 below right now.
We have a cheer question, Ms. Hollywood, if you're if you're ready for this. For cheer, we paid a large sum of money to participate, ordered uniforms, et cetera, without knowing what was going to happen. I understand that. Now, everything for the spring has been canceled and tryouts are virtual. But the amount is still the same, even though it's likely that activities will be very limited or non-existent in the spring and summer. Hopefully, it'll change in the fall, but we don't know why. Why have costs not changed when the experience has? I know that's something cheer coaches have, I'm a cheer mom too, have battled with.
Yes, well, with this year, I mean, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen and how things change from week to week, month to month. For next year, we are planning for things to be normal, as they possibly can be. And the vendors that we are also using, when it comes to cheer uniforms and for camps, they haven't changed their prices. And so even just the UIL competition that just occurred in January, the entry fee is still the same. So much of what's going on has stayed the same. And the world is continuing to go on, and we're just going to have to plan based on what we hope is going to happen, and it's going to be a regular year.
Great, thank you. And I would, I would type, I was going to type this answer, but but Tara so succinctly finished up her answer. This is a question that we can ask and answer pretty quickly. Someone who'd asked before, I'm sorry, I think I got a bit confused. Could you clarify? Do students have to be in-person to participate in athletics and fine arts, or can they stay virtual and only come to in-person practice? And and jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, but they can be virtual learners who come to campus to practice when they're needed to, right?
Yes, Jenny, they can come up for that class period. So for example, if I'm in a first-period athletic period, I can come up, participate in that class, participate in before-after-school practice if it's taking place, and then go back home for my virtual instruction for all my other coursework.
We have a question. I think there might be a typo, so I'm going to, forgive me if I misinterpret this, but I think what they're asking is, while athletics is going on, they're saying their child's not able to sort of regularly do things in PE they would normally do, or doing things like cup stacking. Is that something, Dwayne, someone you're on your your staff could could address about maybe how PE classes look different this year?
Yeah, I'm going to pitch that one over to Tara.
Um, yes, PE does look a little different this year. High school and middle school PE, they are not dressing out, just because when you talk about going in and dressing out, you're going to have to go in waves, because you don't want everybody in the locker room at the same time. And then by the time everybody dresses out and then comes back out, then it's almost time to get dressed back again. And I'm assuming cup stacking, maybe referring to elementary, which is want a great hand and eye coordination activity. I think some of the activities that are taking place on campus depends on how many students are actually in-person. And the staffing that they have as well. I do know that the district has purchased sprayers and sanitizing equipment for all PE teachers to use so that whatever equipment they decide to use or that they're able to use, that they are spraying it down and sanitizing it in between each use and between each activity before the next group comes in.
Thank you. This question is, with everything that's been done, you guys have done a wonderful job of explaining our protocols. Why is athletics still showing the highest cases of COVID? I think they're probably referring to the fact that we have shown that classroom transmission rates are actually very, very low. And and our transmission rates at athletics are low, but not as, but higher, obviously, than our classroom rates.
Yeah, I I think part of it has to do with the sheer number of of kids that participate. As I mentioned earlier, there's over 8,000 students currently participating. And from campus to campus, that really is anywhere from 20-something percent of the total campus population up to, I think, one campus has 47% of their kids participating. So we do have large numbers of kids involved in these activities. And if so, if you're definitely just simply looking at numbers, there's the sheer number of kids participating might equate to, you know, some of those numbers definitely being attributed to athletics for sure.
Okay. I think we've answered all of our questions. As I said, there were some, there were some repeats. So the ones that I haven't clicked on, answer live, or 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 dismissed. I think we've gotten to that. But I would say, I want, I do want to say, we do have time then to kind of wrap things up with some of the folks on the call. But, you know, obviously, a lot of, a lot of interest, a lot of disappointment in in the band season. Concern about, and there's a perception that football was able to do a little more than other sports. But I feel like we've, I feel like you guys have done a great job of of explaining the complexities there. And I think a huge part of that is, as we've said, these stages, we've not gone in a chronological way from stage 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, or 5, 4, 3, 2, 1, where we have been about, there's been valleys and peaks. We've seen spikes after Thanksgiving, after after winter break. And of course, we're in stage five now. And I think it's clear that that for everyone on this call, your your priority is to make sure kids are safe, kids are learning, and as Mr. Lloyd said, that we're helping them become better human beings. I just want to make sure that Ms. Robuck and Mr. Wyrick ha- has an opportunity just to kind of sum up. If you want to have any of your folks speak as well, and then Dr. Presley and obviously, Trustee Vessa as well. So Ms. Robuck, would you like to have some closing comments?
Yes, I'd just like to say, we're trying to get out there and do more performances. There have been performing groups. There have been activities. Some of you may not have been able to have your student participate in those individually or particularly because that campus may have had a lower number of in-person students. And they may not have been doing the same activities as other campuses, but I do see that changing now. I'm I'm hopeful. I'm hoping for the spring. We're hoping to have dance shows. We're hoping to have theater performances, more of them, choir performances in our auditoriums. That's why we're rolling out the protocols. Yes, we're hoping to get working on marching band so that in the summer, they can take off on that. We're all very hopeful. We want the students engaged, and we know there has been a lot of disappointment. And like I said, I'm here at the Performing Arts Center this evening, and I don't often come here on evenings anymore because we don't have performances right now. And it made me very sad this evening to be in this building alone. We hope that changes. So we're doing everything we can. Our teachers are doing incredible work virtually with our students. They're learning in art, theater, dance, music. The one good thing and hopeful thing and positive thing that's come out of this is they're learning their craft individually, probably better than they've ever learned it before. Individual assessments are higher than they've ever been before. And so we want to take those good parts and roll them into what we have been able to do in our past and put what we've learned from this experience and going forward, putting those two things together to make the individual performance the best it can be, and the group starting to participate as a team again.
Thank you. Coach Wyrick, do you have any closing thoughts?
Sure, sure. And I'd like to say that I do appreciate everyone who's participated tonight and sent in questions. I acknowledge the, you know, the strong emotions on both sides of some of the issues that have been raised or or that we've dealt with throughout throughout the year. But again, please know that student safety is always at the center of of our decisions. We know that a large group of students lost opportunities last, you know, March, moving forward through the spring and never got to participate in some of the activities that they love. And and we weren't involved in those decisions necessarily. So a- as we try to offer these opportunities, we acknowledge the strong emotions on both sides. We understand if we shut an opportunity, an activity or an opportunity down, there'll be a strong emotions expressed by people who who want those activities because of all the good things that they provide kids. And at the same time, when faced with a decision, if we choose to say, you know, we believe we can do this safely, and we can move forward, we we believe in our people and our and our kids to to accomplish this. We know that the strong emotions come out on the other side that, well, you shouldn't have even allowed the opportunity. So again, I want to acknowledge that we we understand that. We hear everything that you share with us, and it's all taken into consideration. But again, there's a whole lot of really good people who are trying to do what's best for kids.
Thank you so much. And Dr. Guerrero, I wanted to give you a moment, too, because like I said, you have that principal connection and that really important perspective. So is there anything you'd like to add for our participants?
I appreciate that, Jenny. Again, I want to echo what both Lisa and Coach Wyrick have said. Thank you for joining us and sharing your questions, and we recognize the emotion. We are here to serve all of our students and our staff, our community. Trustee Vessa, thank you so much for joining us this evening. It it is emotional. We are here as as servant leaders in Round Rock ISD. And we are also parents, most of us here on the screen. And so it has been a long 10 months, but I will tell you that the entire team, our staff, has been exceptional. When Lisa talks about performances have taken place and we are planning more, our principals are blown away by our directors that are bringing to us logistics of how we can ensure safety while also allowing students to have stages to perform and to participate. And so again, thank you for your partnership, and we're here to serve you. And of course, maintaining safety, but giving our students opportunity. So just a big thank you to all of you and a shout out to our staff that continue to do remarkable things for our students.
Thank you. Trustee Vessa, I wanted to give you an opportunity to to say a few words as well.
Thank you. And I really appreciate everybody taking the time tonight, all the staff, to provide this town hall and answer these questions from our community. And I just want to say, I asked to be on this town hall because both my kids are involved in athletics. And my son is involved in in band, marching band at Westwood and athletics at Westwood. So I understand all the emotions going on that the parents are talking about. I I'm feeling them, too. And both my husband and I participated in athletics and fine arts in high high school. And so we know what an incredible part of the high school and and middle school, just school experience it is. And so we just want to do everything we can to to just make it possible for kids, even in this difficult time, to have these valuable experiences, memorable experiences. And I share with everyone here that I hope and pray that this ends as soon as possible. And we can get back, I I was at, you know, my daughter's middle school basketball game last week. And afterwards, I was just reflecting on it and thinking, I'm just going to cherish this moment because I really don't know if she's going to get another basketball this game this season. And she, it may, she may not. She, their entire team is on quarantine right now. So we just have to cherish every moment because they're so precious. And and I'm just, I'm just so grateful for the opportunities my kids have had, and I can't wait to get back to enjoying them completely without COVID to worry about.
No, I know we all feel that way. Thank you so much. Dr. Presley, would you like to close this out? No, I know we all feel that way. Thank you so much. Dr. Presley, would you like to close this out?
Yeah, thanks, Jenny. I appreciate that. So I'll begin where I started. I mean, uh, extracurricular activities with fine arts and athletics is the catalyst for a lot of student success. And so, um, I just want everybody to know that every day the folks that I'm surrounded by, including principals, our directors, our campus folks, everybody else, they wake up trying to figure out how to make things happen for kids, not to eliminate opportunities. And I think that's important for everybody to know, uh, that we're not, um, we don't take the convenient route of oh, we can't do that because this is happening, or we can't do this because that's happening. But we actually uh, troubleshoot and try to figure out ways every day to make our kids as successful as they can be because we know how valuable these extracurricular activities are for our students. So I appreciate everybody on the call tonight and all the questions that were put in. And, um, so that, those are my comments, Jenny. So I'll end with that.
Thank you, sir. Uh, and just kind of one final thing I wanted to ask, um, Lisa and Dwayne, if if parents are thinking, I still have questions, maybe they're really specific to my kid's school or program, what would your advice be? Who, I mean, who should they sort of talk to and maybe kind of let them know how, when they talk to their coach, you know, that that or or their band director, that band director is talking to to Jaeger Lloyd and the Jaeger Lloyd is talking to Lisa Robuck and that we, we are connected to our campuses. We're a large organization, but we have intentionally developed a structure so that we can really have our finger on the pulse. Let me talk, can you just address that quickly?
Yeah, I mean, I I would agree with you 100% that, you know, sometimes individual questions, um, I I would say they're definitely campus level. Uh, things take them to your, directly to the coach. Um, sometimes if that's a concern that that you don't get uh, remedied right away or or to an answer to your satisfaction, then then we have another step in how you can, you know, try to get that addressed by working with some of the administrative staff on that campus. And then at some point or along the way already, you can bet there's going to be some conversation that I get involved in as well. Um, so we do, uh, constantly, we communicate about concerns or issues that, uh, you know, parents might have. Uh, but yeah, I I would say, you know, y- you can always feel free to email uh, and expect an answer from anybody um, that works with your kids. Uh, I think that's something that we all expect our 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 staff members to do. And and if you don't, uh, again, get an answer or an answer that, you know, clearly explains that, then then keep looking for that answer because that that's part of what we do is is try to provide answers.
Same here. Please email us. Um, we will get the answer. We we try to talk to our teachers weekly. We have support and shares, um, for these times when it's it's harder to get to everybody's campus. Uh, and so we we feel we're in direct communication with them. We're in direct communication with the principals. Email us, we'll get you the answer. We're going to update our website with our protocols as they change, hopefully for the best. So we're, we're here to serve you. Uh, just like Dr. Guerrero said, we're servant leaders and please contact us and we'll get the answer.
Well, thank you so much. I want to thank all of our panelists, um, Trustee Vessa for joining us. And I want to especially thank our participants. I hope this was helpful. Um, and we do, um, if you're interested, we do have another town hall coming up to look at special ed issues and we'll have our experts in that field as well. So, uh, again, hope you find it useful. The video will be posted on our website. We'll have English and Spanish options. And thanks again for joining us. Have a nice night.